Okay, we will follow the meeting to order at 4:33. Roll call please.
Barnes.
He said he was coming later.
Oh, I see. Bauman?
Here.
Gwiss?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Hermany? Kaiser?
Here.
Maple?
Yes ma'am.
Zebra?
Yes.
All here but Barnes and Hermany.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I need a approval of the agenda.
Also, who?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jess and a second by Peter. Questions? If not, all vote in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion will carry. Item five, public forum. Public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address. Okay, we will move on as there's nobody in the audience. Item six, discussion and possible decision, the quarterly update of policies.
I just, I'm bird walking, but I, I looked at the public participation because I remembered we had language that said any resident of the most in each school district having legitimate interest. I'm not sure, and this isn't, I'm, I'm just wondering if you have the ability to limit that under somebody's First Amendment rights. So I can't remember if that was Dean Dietrich checked on that language or not. Just when you read that, it triggered because it, something came up in another school district. And so, I'm, I don't know what that.
We did deal with, because, we did because of the fact that we have people who, who's, might have children in the district, but they don't live in the district.
Okay.
And teachers, you know, so, yes.
Okay.
We did, we did address that with you and kind of went through.
I remember when we did it, and it just, when this other issue came up in another district just triggered me to take a look, so. Okay. You want me to?
Sure, right ahead.
And just, I, I introduce myself to Peter, but I, I worked for a group that sort of manages policy for the district, I'm a retired superintendent, director of pupil services, et cetera. Oh, I'll wait a little bit.
Would you put me over here? Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay.
Hi, Steve Lavalle.
Hi Steve, good seeing you, didn't met you before.
And so we kind of monitor what's going on in federal and state legislation, court cases, Department of Justice rulings, and come with some language. And a couple times a year, I'll come and we'll work for the, the policy stuff that we would suggest. That doesn't mean that the district itself doesn't address policy concerns as they come, which this board has done. So, so we sort of monitor things, but then the board itself always has the ability to bring language and issues forward. So, so we have a, a number of policies, and they're, it's a, it's a mixture this time. Some are from our group, and I, I should have mentioned, we work with the law firms of Davis and Kiltown, and Strain Patterson, Rennie Lewis and Lacy. So anything you see from us has been written, vetted, and/or approved by those law firms. Okay? And so we have some policies in here that are from our group. A, a number of them related to language at the Office of Civil Rights wanted to see in your harassment, nondiscrimination policies with regard to record retention. So those are, we would just tell you, we should put that language in there. Districts were getting cited, the Office of Civil Rights works out of Chicago. Districts in Indiana and Ohio were getting cited for, we have record retention language, it wasn't robust enough in their opinion. I worked with another, Rochelle, and they had an OCR complaint, and sure enough, the Office of Civil Rights wanted to see that language in that policy. We just hadn't gotten to that quick enough. So, so there's those kind of policies. Then there's some that were requests for the administration to look at, and then some board requests as well.
So. Steve, maybe I could just jump in for a second?
Yeah.
Share with Peter and Kevin. The nice thing about having a NEO representative is that Steve has been here a couple of weeks ago, and he sat down with the administrative team. And typically, whether it's Steve or other NEO representatives, what they will say to us is, John, you really don't have much choice, as you just said, in these areas. We're going to suggest, and we're almost going to use the word required, because something has either happened in the state statute, or federal law, or also law, you really need to have these. Then they'll pretty much share with us, these are the other things that we're recommending, and these are the things that probably ninety percent of the school districts around here are also buying into, highly recommended, you don't have to do it, but most of the districts are doing it. And then you get down to those that are, eh, you may want to consider this, but quite honestly, very few people are taking this on. So that's where people like Steve become extremely helpful, saying, this is required, highly recommended, last part, it's really up to you.
And this is, this 8330 on student records is a good example. Legislation was passed that requires districts that they transfer records no later than the next working day, okay? So you, you don't have a choice. And so that language, you know, we bring you the language, in a number of districts, they weren't aware of it. You know, I don't know the, the thinking behind that with the legislature, if they were thinking districts weren't being expedient enough, but they pass legislation that requires school districts now, no later than the next working day. So that's an example of where I put a one by it, and that's sort of to help the board know, that's a legal requirement, we're really not, we're not going to mess with that. School safety was a one, because the school legisla-, legislation got passed with regard to school safety plans, and with school, that school administrators and staff are now mandated for reports. So, so those are some examples, and so I'm, where would you like me to go? Or what would you like to discuss?
Well, I guess if anybody, you know, we could look at the ones that the board requested.
Yeah.
I would say, but any of the new ones that are out there, because everybody received this, they should be able to look through, if they got questions on them before we get to the more requested ones, you know, then we'll go back and look, but I think we just go right down the line.
Sure.
Look, there was some that we, there was maybe like a parentheses of, well, a decision we need to make on the language, correct?
Right.
As well, okay.
Right, right.
So if I look at this 0131, this was, this is really, uh, this was, this was for Amy. She asked me if there was a requirement in the statute that the policies be printed, I mean, a hard copy be available, and there isn't, all right? But we looked at the language, and we had language that said printed, so just to clarify, we just changed that to include it in the board policy manual. Your policy manual is electronically available, so, but Amy, that we said if somebody asks, and maybe they don't have electronic access, those policies can be printed out. But just, so this is really a minor one. Then we had some discussion on this idea of, of conflict of interest. So there was language that apparently Dean Dietrich helped with the district. It was recommended to go into board member ethics, but there's also already a, a board conflict of interest policy. And so I put the language there as well. Basically, there's statute language that board, board members cannot use their position for financial gain, all right? And that's defined in a number of different ways. We had two board, nine-member board, like you, we had two board members who had spouses working in the district, all right? So when it came to negotiations, and in those days prior to Act 10, it was truly negotiations. When the board would go into closed session to discuss where they were going to be, they excused themselves. They, they just did not attend, thinking it would be much cleaner for them not to be in the room. During a meeting, sometimes they would excuse themselves if, if there was discussion coming up related to something that could have an impact, or potentially an impact to their spouse, and then we would note in the minutes at, you know, 4:50, 4:47, left the room, returned back at 4:52. You're not obligated to, but that, that perception was just cleaner for them. So, so the language that was written here, we already had language in C. When a board member determines a positive or personal conflict, should, prior to the matter being discussed, disclose that interest, and that becomes a matter of the record. So if you're looking, so Amy would note, you know, Mark noted, I may have a conflict here, and it's just in the record, and, and then would abstain from both voting and discussion on that issue. So, language that was expanded a little bit, this isn't our language, this is specific to you. Avoid being placed in a position of possible conflict, may lead to nepotism, and refrain from using the position of her personal partisan gain.
For the discussion, you said, you said you can't discuss, I know you can't vote, but...
Can't vote, and the record would be not to even discuss. And I think the, you know, and this is just my opinion, Mark, that the, whatever that discussion is, if you have the potential for some financial gain out of it, the perception could be, you know, you're saying these things because we know, I, I don't know your background, I'm, I'm making this up. You have some benefit to gain out of saying, yeah, we should do that, or we should not do that. And so it's that, that perception, in fact, this time we changed in the, for the administrators, teachers and support staff, the conflict of interest language, so that it actually says that in those employee policies. It says, they should perform their dues in a manner free from an actual conflict of interest, or from situations that create the appearance of a conflict in relation to decision and actions of that employee. So, we didn't, we don't have that language in for board members, but the statute is pretty clear. You, you just, I don't think the stat, I don't want to say that the statute is going to say you can't be involved in a discussion, that's an interpretation of what that law would be, so.
Steve, one of the things I could share with the board is that, again, I think you directed us administratively to work with your attorney, Dean Dietrich. There are districts out there that have very, very strict nepotism policies, and under those districts, if, if you're related, or, I mean, basically, no relatives, son-in-laws, nobody works. Dean's point was that in a smaller district like this, in many smaller districts, that's just not feasible, that there are going to be relatives, it's hard to get all the needed employees that we want. It's not that we can't create a nepotism policy, but careful of what you ask for is what he's saying. At the same time, what you want to do is have some language in there that says, when nepotism starts to occur, then the language that Steve has included up here, again, that Dean has provided, says, we're going to avoid discussions, we're going to avoid any votes thereon, but it doesn't prohibit you from a district, as a district, having, I'm just going to use the word relatives, being employed in the district because you're a board member.
And in fact, if we go to, in the teacher section, professional staff section, and support staff, this policy 3120, here's language, relatives may be employed, okay? When we bring that to the district, we don't say may, the, the language we bring to you is the option of may or may not. And the district makes a choice then to say, and in this case said may, may be employed by the board, however, if a board knows benefit financially, directly and indirectly, may not participate anyway in the discussion or vote on the matter related to that employment. And further, we're said, and again, this was, this, you know, this was, we'll bring you, again, language that you craft to fit what you want, and the language says, may be employed relative, however, arrangements will be made so that the staff member being employed is not placed in a position in which they would be supervised directly, or supervised directly the relative staff member. So there's two pieces, one, no discussion or vote, but two, we're not going to, you're not going to be put in a position then to supervise. I have a district where the superintendent's wife is the high school principal, okay? And they contracted with CISA to do her evaluations, because that, I mean, that's a tough one, all right?
Extremely.
And the board, they knew going into it, it's just she's a very talented administrator, and they were willing to take that, risk not the word, but that challenge, and find a way around it.
My wife would want you to hire a superintendent if that was the case.
It was one on the east side of the state like that too, maybe that's what you're thinking about.
I'm not, this one's in the southwest.
Oh, this is.
Yeah. I just want to clarify, I mean, if you wanted Dean to do that, I think Steve points out, and I'm not encouraging strong nepotism, but there are districts that make it very clear, if there is no conflict, because there are no relatives permitted in the district, I don't know that we're big enough to have that type of policy, so I didn't go there.
No, I, I work with over fifty districts, and none of them have a no, just because, two things, one, a lot of them are smaller districts, that's really hard to do, and you potentially limit hiring a very talented person simply for that reason, when you can deal with those other challenges, so, all right? If I continued, I mentioned the conflict of interest, again, we've strengthened that a little bit to say, if, from an employee's perspective, you know, even if what you're doing is a financial benefit to the district, but it's also a financial benefit to you, that's a conflict, okay? So we've strengthened that language, and maybe it doesn't rise to the $15,000 level that's in the statute, but that's, if it's $10,000, and you're taking something for financial gain, that still may be a conflict, okay? I mentioned the nondiscrimination, the employee anti-harassment, do you want me to?
Those are all legal.
Yeah.
Required.
Religion, it, I didn't, I didn't identify it as legal, but we, we tweaked the language so that it, what it's saying is, just because something involves religion, it doesn't make it, I mean, this isn't the word I want, but illegal for us to use in school. So if we're studying art, and we, we look at the Sistine Chapel, or which, or something in, on that nature, or in social studies, we're studying religions of the world, that in and of itself is not a, like, illegal for lack, or that separation of church and saint. However, the teacher, whoever's using those, shouldn't be promoting or demoting religion during that discussion. So we tweaked that language just to make that a little clearer, we're, we're getting some questions.
It is helpful to the superintendent, because often during the holidays, you've got your music teachers, there's a lot of historical music that is also religious, and you get that complaint, how dare you allow these songs to be sung as a part of your, you know, celebration in the schools? And the issue is, they're not being selected for their religious portion, they're being selected for the historical significance. So having this language to fall back on is very helpful.
Class size was a board request?
Yeah, that was a, a policy that we used to have in.
Correct.
And that we brought back. And that one was requested by Kevin, who's an ongoing board that knew Kevin, because we were looking at that. So, that, is that actually considered, would be a second reading?
Not, well, speaking of that, it was part of your old policies, it was not part of the new NEO policies.
Okay.
This is the one that we've, of all the policies we've looked at, we thought you'd done a nice job before, and we simply brought your policy in.
Okay, okay.
What's all change in it, or you just put numbers in it?
No, it's.
Those are the same numbers, everything is as it read before, it's simply highlighted and writing, because it's, it's New NEO.
Actually, the only change there was on that one, was the very last line, which is not shown on there.
The union, I think, implications, because there are no unions anymore.
Right, right, right.
That's gone.
Okay.
Now, this was your, this was your policy when we updated everything and wasn't included?
Right.
And so the board asked for it to come back.
It's got goals, it's got guidelines, and one of the things that it says in there is that there should be either annual or periodic reports coming to the board, letting you know how those class sizes are, that's something we have to determine, do you want that on a yearly basis, or how often do you want the principals to report back to you what's happening? And when they do, how close do the numbers come to meeting what's in here? I think you did that at the beginning of the year last year, Kelly, I think you was, you were the one that looked at that, and looked at the minutes.
I'm, I'm just looking at this now, Steve, I have one from last year that is, the old one is 2312, and the new one is 5136.
I, I messed up and numbered it wrong, originally it should be 2312.
Okay.
Amy caught that.
Yep, okay. All right, that's all I need.
I have a question on 1213.
Yeah.
Jane? So according to the policy, the district administrator, one of the comments I have is sometimes we use district administrator, sometimes we use superintendent. I'm assuming district administrator is the superintendent, is that an assumption?
This district chooses to use superintendent, so I'll fix that.
There would be a.
If it relates only to that person, though.
Yes.
Because the principal's also the.
Depending if it's countable, is that it takes on?
Yes, in this case, it's actually means the superintendent, because it's talking about a specific, it's saying that the, I'll just, an administrator other than the superintendent shall not transport without approval of supervisor, consistent with provisions. Question?
Yeah, so I had a comment on J of, so we are okay with the superintendent taking students in their personal vehicle, that's the way that's written?
Which one are you looking at?
Um, 1213J.
Yeah.
So in essence, it says that it's okay for the superintendent to do that, and I just, it's something I caught, that's really a little few notes I had, just making sure that...
Do we not currently have some administrators that take students home in a, but not in their vehicle, maybe?
It says a personal vehicle.
No.
In essence, it says, the way I read it, the superintendent can do it without any approval. That's what it says. And I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, maybe.
Would you like approval from someone to do it, Peter, or would you?
Well, that would, that would, that can only come from us.
Correct.
Maybe you got the old beating, or half a week a month for approval, man, you're...
The kids mustn't school for me.
So, I, I was trying to figure out why it would, would occur if there's a, maybe an emergency or a child.
Yeah, it's rare that we would, you know, I, I, you know, I'm going, thirteen years of superintendent, I don't know that I ever took a kid in my car. And if I transported a kid, somebody else came with.
You did. That's, just trying to protect our superintendent.
Yeah.
There's times when like a disciplinary action, you might have a student with, you know, significant behavioral concerns, that's at the grand theater, and they just can't get a hold of parents, the child needs to be removed from the location because they are in, you know, a flooded state. As a principal, I've been in a situation, being in a pretty significant building in Wausau, where I, I did, as a building principal, I had no, no choice, the child that just was not doing well, and most of the time it was a significant behavioral issue, where you maybe had a child in special education who just was flooding or having a, a hard time. So it's, it's not common, but.
Right.
I mean, that would be an instance just where, like, it could happen, you know, you're at the school forest, and, and you can't get a hold of parents, and the child's just really struggling or hurting others, or something's happening, and that's really dire, but that might be.
Julie, the way it's written, you would just need to give a call to David, and he'd say, good.
Right, right.
This is more for, are we giving blanket permission? The way this is written.
Yeah, well, and I know, like, a lot of things we're taking, and I'll use my experience, that if there's a field trip out there, there's a lot of times we designate a certain vehicle, like what Julie said with fed students, so that if they need to leave, we have enough room on the other vehicles to take the other kids home.
Right.
But I can tell you too, for disciplinary action, if they're no longer able to ride the bus home, and the parents just have no way of getting them, I've known that they've taken them home too, because that's the only way they'll get them to and from school.
Okay.
So.
Odd circumstances.
But it could happen, I mean, just.
So is Peter just asking for?
I was more asking.
I mean, it, it could happen, I'm trying to think, and I can't think of twenty-some years of doing that as a superintendent, that I ever took a student in my car alone, I just don't do that. Could it happen where it's an emergency, I suppose, I can't. But ideally, the first thing that comes into your mind is, you want somebody else in that vehicle.
Do you have school cars, school vehicles?
We have a van.
There are some vans.
Yeah, there's a van and a car.
We have, we have school cars, and so it was easy to grab and take a kid that way rather than a private vehicle. That's a good question, I.
Could we change it, so it would just, well, well, where you, it would say, a single child, or, or without another, trying to think of how to word it, somebody else in the vehicle?
Sure.
Maybe right at the end of the sentence, you would put, except in the case of an emergency. Potentially, that would be a resolution to it.
Sure.
Could be a resolution to it.
Is that what you would like?
And then it would include something like, maybe in parentheses after that, it would say something to the effect that if an emergency required this action, notification to the board president, in the case of the superintendent, and even the, in the case of the, of a building administrator, or some other administrator, is close to immediate notification that it happened, the superintendent would be appropriate to me.
Yeah, it's some notification to, that this child is being transferred later now.
Well, because suddenly somebody next door sees the child getting out of the car, and then, you know, they're talking to somebody, and someone couldn't then say, well, you know, and then the superintendent's caught off guard, or the board president's caught off guard, at least there would be that checking balance.
Yes.
Right, has some notification.
So what I would, I would, super, so not to, for school-related, in a private vehicle for an emergency without the approval of the supervisor, if, you know.
No, not, no, I think it's, it's got the reverse message there. It says shall not transport. Yeah. Except in the case of an emergency. Isn't that what we're trying to cross?
Yeah.
I guess my question is, if there's, when I think of emergency, I'm thinking, you're going to call 911, you're not going to necessarily transport yourself, so.
They're talking discipline, right?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, from what Julie is saying, is typically a behavioral issue, it's not necessarily an emergency, but it's a behavioral issue, because.
Sure, that's fair.
Oh, I see what you're trying to define.
Yeah, and I was thinking.
Yeah, because if, if it's an emergency, you're going to call EMS.
Yeah. In, in extreme behavioral, can you call the police for, to, to take a child back?
We have, depending on where the location is. I mean, that's what drivers are directed to do sometimes, stop the vehicle, and you call, and, yes, there's things like that in place. Hopefully you don't have to. Look like what?
No, I was just, no, I get what you're saying, it's just.
Well, you can wordsmith it to death, there's no dromeda, but this is.
Hope it doesn't happen.
This is our first reading, so we can.
Or do we just take out the, other than the superintendent, so? Or you could say extraordinary rather than emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll work too.
Yeah.
Right? Although I would think that it would, it appears to be an emergency when you're describing it.
Yeah.
You know, most people would be, this is an emergency, but it doesn't rise to require an EMS.
Right.
Sounds like a medical maybe emergency, but more than.
Yeah, right. A circumstantial, for sure.
Yes.
Because it also ends up, it could, that circumstance could also very much protect the child's well-being from future harassment, or, you know, peer pressure abuse, or what have you. You know, embarrassment, whatever, all those things apply.
So do you want the language, except for extraordinary circumstances, or added, or, I did add, if the superintendent must transfer in their private vehicle, the board president shall be notified.
We're also trying to address the case of a principal, or a, what about administrators don't, I mean, teachers sometimes, although if you've got a single teacher, they're not going to leave the children, rest in the children.
Nope.
But I could see a circumstance, well, I don't know if I could see a case where, a teacher might be in a case where they would, in a position where they would have their personal vehicle on a field trip. I mean, maybe if they were going to leave early or meet somebody, I mean, it could happen.
Yeah, we would have the same language in the policy related to teachers, except instead of administrator, would say professional staff member, so, but it would have the same, but in this case, we just have the student. But in this case, we just said the superintendent must transfer to board president shall be notified. I didn't put in extraordinary circumstance. Is that definite, only, is my extraordinary, your extraordinary, and we're going to get into you shouldn't have because there really wasn't extraordinary. You know, some of his judgment, or we don't have any other choice. I think the intent of this is that we, we were very careful. I mean, we added the language for school-related activities. I think we're just trying to be careful of putting people and/or kids in potentially risky situations.
I think we just protected our superintendent with the language we just did. So then that gets back to my question of administrator, superintendent, we have conflicting language.
Yeah, the, the choice here is superintendent, and so what I, it was.
On that one you did, yeah, but I.
If you find.
In other cases.
It would be that I missed, we use the term district administrator, that's our. But when I go to districts, they'll say, no, we call them the superintendent. So we go through and we change everything, and once in a while I'll miss.
Superintendent.
I guess if you see anymore, just let me know. That your goal is by the next meeting, we have to read every single one.
I know, I'm, well, that's, my goal is to be reading them all and then when I saw the list, I'm like, okay, now I'm going to change my course to these. I was up till midnight still reading last night.
Oh, yes, it's a little bit of reading.
We, we use superintendent here, okay? So here was this selecting student teacher, interns. This was a minor change about contacting the building principals, administration, the superintendent, superintendent, so when superintendent, superintendent.
Yeah, that, that's an example right there, but then there, I didn't write down examples that had district administrator throughout.
I usually catch them and I might have missed.
I had a boss when I started work twenty-three years ago who loved red pens, so I apologize.
Nope, nope. Steve, there's a couple that came up, looking at time. The Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship, that was one that I think Nate wanted the board to see because what we're doing is changing the criteria, should there be a tie? Maybe that would be one you should.
So we're looking at fifty-four fifty-one point oh one, okay? And there's Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship is a scholarship that goes to the person with the highest GPA. And once in a while, and so the district, we have specific district language. And it said that if the, if the ACT scores were tied, we then went to the SAT. And the question was, in Wisconsin, that's rarely taken. It's very common out east, but in Wisconsin, it's rarely taken. And so Nate, we came back, so that if there's, if there's two four point O's, we're going to then compare highest ACT composite. If those are both thirty-sixes, we're then going to go to the highest sub-score in the ACT and the kid can choose. The two of us are tied, I'm taking English, you're taking math, we're both thirty-twos. Now, I'm going to choose math, you're going to choose till we get down to, that we don't have a tie. Rarely will we go through all five subsets of the subscores of the ACT to get to that, but if, if we do, then there's going to be a coin flip.
What kind of dollar amount are we talking for these scholarships?
About ten grand over the course of four years.
Could it be split between those two instead?
I asked that, yeah.
The only way would be if the person who gets it gives the other, well, somehow gave the other person the money.
Sometimes it happens where the person is based on class rank and they've already been given a scholarship by university, so they will simply decline the entire scholarship and then it moves down to the next person. But they don't split them.
And, and I'm in districts where they struggle with coin flip. Draw the highest card and I always, you, you, it will be, I'm not sure it would ever happen, that by the time you got through the subscores, it would be tied, but if it did, now what are you going to do? So we have something. We have some, some non-subjective, as, as difficult as might be, it's not, I've, I saw where they had a, we're going to form a committee who's going to look at their participation in co-curriculars and not, I'm like, that's like a lawsuit waiting to happen. Unless you have very specific, a rubric that's going to assign points for it and everything you can think of, C while again is difficult, it's, it's not subjective. Again, I don't know that you'd ever get there, but.
And again, these are just the first readings too, so.
That's true, that's.
But that came from Nate.
It did, and that's.
Okay. I mentioned that, that one came, class size was board, interns was the administration. Non-renewal, resignation, this would be a new policy. What we did, we broke, there, there's all kinds of, statutes apply in different ways depending on what your status is. And so if I'm, if I'm a full-time teacher, there's statute protection. Under one eighteen twenty-two, that requires certain notice timelines. And any non-renewal or termination requires a majority vote of the full membership of the board, okay? By statute. So if you're nine and there's only seven at the meeting and the vote's four to three, that doesn't apply. You've got to have five, okay? So we break that down for full-time teachers. Then part-time teachers, they don't have those protections, okay? By statute, however, if the contract you give them, and we find, I found this just about every district I work with, because you use the same contract and it has the protections of one eighteen twenty-two. So if you use the same contract and it has that language, you've given part-time teachers those same protections, okay? But in this district, there's one to fix. We said part-time teachers may be terminated by the district administrator, okay? We, we, you're not obligated that that go to the board level and in this case, we left it with the superintendent, okay? Now, again, if the contract says it's one eighteen twenty-two, then you, you still have to meet the timelines and that vote has to be by the board. But for now, part-time teachers are with the superintendent. Administrators, certain administrators have statutory protections, others don't unless you give it to them. So superintendent, business manager.
In fact, I think one of the things you'll see with the employee handbook comes before you in August. State law does not require the full one eighteen point, I can't get the statutes, to be given to your part-time instructors, but your board policy does according to the employee handbook. That's one of the reasons we went through that whole procedure in terms of the recent non-renewal. That was a part-time teacher and it was following the guidelines in your employee handbook. We're going to be bringing language to you in August that says guarantees an employee that basically cover your full-time employees would no longer cover your part-time because there's nobody else around here. With Dean Dietrich, some of this is, why do you have that in there? Well, it's there and we'll get rid of it in August.
And then administrators, certain have protection by statute. Superintendent, business manager, school principal, their assistants. Others, you know, your director of technology does not have statute protection. If you give that to Brady in the contract, then you're going to follow that statute. Otherwise, we've said, those again, have been issued. We left that with the superintendent as well.
Steve, a couple more, just in terms of the timeframe. The threats of violence is a new policy, I'd like the board to hear about that one. And then also that whole wellness thing, that's a long one. There were some things added there because of the federal legislation.
Eighty-four sixty-two oh one is threats of violence. As part of the safety legislation, staff now are required to report threats of violence, okay? And so they're also required to get training. And so I'm assuming sometime this year, there was training for staff on how we were going to. So training is required, procedures, and then sanctions for making threats. So this was, this is a new policy, but it reflects, the statute I think is one seventy-three something that was passed in the last, yeah, one seventy-five thirty-two.
I think some of the board might remember that in January of this year, we had to show you all the things that are related to school safety and that report had to be filed with, I think it's the school safety office. This is a part of it to indicate what type of training took place. This is a new policy that deals with that, the threats of reporting.
And then the wellness policy, Josh had a DPI audit and there were a couple things that they wanted to see in this policy. So specifically about integration, integrating nutrition education into other classroom subjects, okay? By restricting food and beverage to those that meet the nutrition standards. It's basically the smart snacks, smart snacks rule. There's some movement at the federal level that possibly changed this, so we may be back. And then you have to, by policy, designate somebody to sort of ensure compliance and that's Josh right now. And we just, I just put in line and said, the superintendent shall designate somebody so that if that changes and it's not Josh anymore, we don't have to come back and change the policy. So this was part of, again, and then there was requirement to have record retention, inform people and a review had to occur at least every quarters. And so the language the district had done, the wellness policy, some things were cited as missing, we just put those in for you. Are there questions on anything else? I know you have, I think there's a lot.
The only two that came back, there wasn't really any changes per se, but were the personal communication devices, which is policy fifty-one thirty-six. But I think that's kind of more of an update that we were supposed to give kind of periodically from the administration.
I think, again, we talked about that in terms of policies. It doesn't mean that the board couldn't change something. I think you had some significant discussion on this before it became a part of the district. But in listening to the gentleman that just walked in, our vice principal, you're going to hear later tonight when you deal with the employee handbook, that's where we have the rules and regulations that basically take board policy and put them in place. And we had shared with you, that's where the update is going to come from in terms of what's happening at the high school and whether or not we believe there's any changes. You're the board, you can still say, sorry, no, we're banning this or we're banning that, it's up to you. But at this stage in the game, in terms of changing board policy, when we met with Steve a couple of weeks ago, we did not see the need for any changes.
I think the context or background was that idea of ban, you know, I think it came from the other cabin, banning cell phones at the high school. And I brought the Portage High School language, which the policy didn't change. The, the language was in the handbook, that's where they, and they didn't ban them. They just weren't in the classroom, they could be used at other times.
I think we're hitting the header of somebody, what you will hear from Nate later tonight is, we feel that the same types of things that are going on in Portage are the things that are going on here in our high school, but that is me, that you couldn't come up something that you wanted to see that differently.
One of the, just to start the topic. As, as during the Mozeni principal interview process, one of the things that was discussed was how to deal with that phone issue and how to get by in front of staff. And one of the struggles we've historically had is receiving messaging that's very bipolar and their support for the phones. And one of the things I really liked was, one administrator with, with their board said, here are three choices and let, let the staff as a whole deliver that messaging to us, whether it's through some type of survey to say, which one do you want? And because you're the ones that have to enforce it and it's your classroom. And then the debate about who wants what really goes out the window because we have that information right there and all, whatever those choices might be are satisfactory to the board and basically we're safe and we're set. Tell us what you want and how you want to facilitate this to have the best education environment in the classroom. And I really liked that as opposed to us just having a hard line and saying, we as a board, who get inputs from all these different locations, these are all acceptable to us and let, let staff who have to enforce it be the ones to make that decision. How that looks in policy and let's.
Anybody else have those things, Mike?
I got a policy fifty-two hundred and it's in the student handbook and I think that's going to be approved. Now, in there, it says the teacher shall have, or shall have discretion to assign some coursework and examination. Teachers also shall have the discretion to specify where and when examination and coursework shall be completed. Now, I think in all fairness to our students and the teacher for their safety, what do they say in there?
The, the reference to that, what it's saying, you can't, you can't, I'm paraphrasing, fail a kid just because they missed the class. You have to give them some opportunity to make up the course, whatever they missed, the course, the work or the, or the exams. And so the language is saying, when that kid comes back, teacher, you have the discretion to decide how that's done.
How it is done, but where? And, you know, do we want to be more specific? Well, teacher, student, you know, that, it's a super topic.
Yeah, I don't think the intent is that, you know, you're going to have to come to my house or you're going to have to come to, you know, some other place. But again, it's, it's language to, again, part of the statute is you can't fail a kid just because they were absent, so this is to get them, how are they going to make that up?
I mean, maybe if you had schools, I mean, I'm not sure why that place would be added in there.
Maybe it's not during class time that's going to interfere with all the other kids that were there. Instead, they'll make arrangements, whether it's after school or during study hall. Maybe what I'm, how I'm.
It's fine. And then the only other one that we had as a board request was the pre-expulsion policy.
Yeah, this, probably, I don't know, was this, when did we adopt this? Yeah, about, about a year ago.
And again, as we looked at it, we did not have any suggestions for change in the policy. Quite honestly, I think the board would ask, you know, have we used it? Have, you know, and Nate, to my knowledge, the policy had not been used at all since it was put into place and therefore we did not have suggestions on how it could be improved and we just did, we did not have enough experience with it to come up with any recommended changes at this point in time. I think there's, there's certainly debate as to whether pre-opulence made sense, but bottom line is, there is a policy in place, we've just not used it.
I can say with the pre-expulsion, it's similar to the expulsion, except we don't have to go in front of you. More or less, what we've been doing is we tell a student on an expulsion, we bring them to you and then we don't let them come into school for a certain amount of time, usually that year. They do stuff online. That's really what we do with the pre-expulsion too, it's just you don't have to, we don't have to come in front of you.
But had there been any of those this year?
No. I just talked in front of our students this morning about how proud I am to work in Mozeni School District even after yesterday and how that happened. But I brag in front of our principals and our Marathon County principals and our GNC, Great Northern Conference principals. We had zero fights this entire year at a high school. It just doesn't happen. This thing that happened yesterday was, it's an anomaly, I guess, it's something that just looked pretty crazy. But we had a lot of compliments from our staff how we handled it and we're going to be tomorrow to look at if there's anything we can tweak to improve on. But I'm just really proud to work here and it is really a great place then.
I'm going to jump in for just a second, we've got about six minutes. We probably need a minute or two to get to our committee meetings. Part of the way I understand this to hand, and maybe again, is that for any of the policies that are simply revisions, you would ask for a motion tonight to approve those policies. Any policy that is brand new would require a second reading of that policy. Any policy that is brand new would require a second reading of that policy, and you'd get those policies brought back to you after June board meeting, is that correct? And so before we leave this meeting tonight, unless there's more questions.
I have a question, are there, were there a few that we have a decision to make on? Or is that only for the second, is that for the second reading?
You would make the final decision, in other words, between now and the second reading. And for example, you look at it more thoroughly, and you wanted some changes, you could let me know, I could let Steve know, you could add that language. The revisions, those things that are required by the law, this is where, anything that's revisioned to an existing policy, you make a motion, those policies would be approved, anything that's brand new or first reading would come back to you for due.
Can you make that just one, one motion?
I can't have this.
Well, I know you can't.
Can somebody?
Yeah, can somebody?
We would entertain a motion that those policies that are simply a revision of existing policies be approved. Those policies in the enclosure that are in front of you, I don't know. And as a number of, the, the policies are in front of you, anything that's revisioned of those existing policies would be approved.
Since I sat up till at least midnight the last two nights reading them, I'll make a motion to accept the revisions to all policies that are on here as, as revisions.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Peter, and a second by Kelly, further discussion. If not, all those in favor, opposed, motion will carry.
And then Amy will go through and will identify which ones were the brand new ones, and those will be on your agenda for your June board meeting for a second reading.
Is that where Eric is kind of considering the future agenda items from number seven? Or can we just move on, and go, I need a motion to adjourn?
I have a question on future agenda items, as I read these, there's a lot of timelines that our staff has to make, whether it's a January 1st submittal maybe to the federal government, whatever it is. Do we have any kind of compliance tracking software to help our staff meet those deadlines?
Not that I know of. I mean, a lot of those things, we will get reminders from the Department of Public Instruction, or more from the state than the federal, quite honestly, but that's often where, whether it's grants, or whether it's reports, or all these things, we are continued to be reminded that you got four weeks or three weeks if your time is.
That's when I wasn't sure if somebody.
Typically it falls on each of the directors, so I have, you know, a calendar of all my stuff, Julie's got her calendar of everything, because everything's kind of compartmentalized into whatever our, you know, our niche is.
The Department of Public Construction is really big on that.
Okay, that's what I want, I want to make sure our staff is, they have the resources.
Does anyone have a, a module that they can add to their programming?
We don't have any calendar, no, they have asset tracking, of stuff we have, but there's no calendaring. We use Google Calendar for a lot of it, so for shared calendars, you know, that's, that's the way we communicate about stuff that's.
Has it ever been an issue, not that I'm asking for?
I, I, I don't think so. Like John said, the DPI is very good at following up, the only time where they're not is on grants where they're giving money away. If you don't make those deadlines, that's on you, but, you know, I mean, those are usually pretty big.
And the one that you discussed about the scholarship, I thought there was a timeline, and I would hate for the school district to miss that when it could affect a child for $10,000 for the scholarship.
Yeah, you have a deadline to notice, or pick who it is.
Yeah, and I get an email.
Believe me, the kids who are maybe in par for that, their moms and dads do, if not the guidance council.
I'm hoping that can do this.
The other thing, we, we sent out a, a listing of notices of where the district has to do some specific postings, so for example, nondiscrimination has to be posted as a class one notice. This has, so this list, we revise it every year and send it out, and it, it just tells you, and you have to have a notice in your official newspaper about what is director in absence. You have to have this in your student handbook, so we're reviewing that continuously and sending it out to you as rules or laws get changed.
So we can move on, any motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Kelly, and a second by Mark, further discussion. If not, all those in favor, opposed, will carry.
Yes, thank you.
We're gonna follow this in many meetings.
Yeah.
I'm gonna follow, you actually.
Yeah.
We're just gonna follow one of your.